All right, thank you. Uh, welcome everybody to the Town Board work session of Tuesday, August ninth. Can I have a motion to open the work session?
Uh, I move to open the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all right, so we're gonna start off, the first thing um on our work session is um formal abandonment of the FGIS for the form-based code. This is something we uh spoke about in work session uh quite a while ago. Um, it's something certainly the community has made clear that that they would like uh adopted. Um, given however that due to uh unforeseen circumstances. Um, not all our town board members could be here today. We're actually gonna postpone, not in work session, but a vote on this until until next week. Uh, but if there's anything anyone wants to discuss about the resolution that's in the packet, um proposed and some any proposed changes, now would be the time to do that.
I don't have any proposed changes. I mean, I support the resolution, but obviously, you know, the ideal to have certainly other members of the board here if they wanted the opportunity to speak to it. I mean, I think it's basically a statement of what we've talked about for the last, you know, year and certainly six months since we've been elected. Um, which is, you know, coming to to a formal conclusion to end the DGIS FGS process. Um, and I think, um, you know, it's 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 worthwhile for us to do that, to have some finality to it. So I will support it, um, but I but I agree that we should wait till at least another week anyway to give the other four members opportunity to hear.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I um I agree in concept, of course, but um I I prefer to have the discussion with the full board here, or at least with a full board having noticed that we are going to have a discussion.
Right.
About this.
Um, okay, that's fine. Um, Carrie, if you can hear me, Tara's waiting on a a login link to...
I'm sorry?
Tara's waiting on a login link to...
Oh, I will send that to her right now.
Get in, okay. Um, so she will be joined virtually. Um, all right, you know, and the the point of this, just for everybody who's who's listening at home, is, you know, that that form-based code was was sort of ended, I guess, with the election. But as somebody said at that time, is it just tabled or is it officially abandoned? So this resolution is the culmination of that process to really say we are we are now formally um abandoning that process. So that that's where this is coming from. Um, but we can certainly move on and we will uh pick it up again next week.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Um, Jill, do you wanna walk us through the administrative items?
Sure. Okay, um, so one of the things on our agenda is um authorization to approve a filming permit. Uh, the reason why this is before you is because the uh the applicants are asking for uh an extension of time. Um, according to statute, our filming ordinances go from seven in the morning and, I'm sorry, eight in the morning until seven in the morning until eight o'clock at night. They'd like, at at which time, all filming activities, including loading up and loading down, have to stop. They actually need an additional, they need some additional time, so they're asking until nine o'clock. They've gotten the approval, the consent of all of the neighbors on the street. So in light of that, um, it's been our practice to take and grant uh modest extensions. So uh, this is a filming permit for three days for fifty, overlook, it's the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. Um, they also are going to be our renting space in our uh back parking lot um for um a fee, and uh the police chief has also required uh police assistance for them uh for um almost twenty hours during the course of the three days to assist in people loading in, people loading out, making sure that there's uh there's no uh conflict with our commuters in the morning.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Anyone famous gonna be there? Or can you not say? That's okay, you can tell me later.
I can't say, I'll just tell you.
Okay, all right.
I, you know, I didn't take you for one of those starstruck people, but you know, I...
You all have our secrets.
Safe with me, I will never tell. Um, okay. Adoption of minutes, uh, the assessor is uh is requesting permission to attend a conference. We're gonna have uh land line striping services after DPW does such a brilliant job paving our roads. We take and put all the the center lines and the floodlines back. Uh, we've got some vehicle auction uh results. Um, we'd be so pleased. Uh, we've got the results from the mini bid. We were able to pick up uh two dump trucks, which is terrific. Um, and uh we also are um able to locate a large Mack dump slash pile track pile truck from the One Dogged County bid that was available to us. So slowly but surely, we're being able to um fill in the purchases that were scheduled for our vehicle replacement policy that we've been having to do a hard time getting. Um, we um would like to uh award the bid for the after-school bus services to Chapel Court Transportation. This is uh to bring kids uh from schools to our art center programming. Um, we've got a change order from the Bedford Hills Pump Station for Woodard and Current. This was the five thousand dollar um enhanced engineering uh report that is required for um the grants that we're seeking to um file for. So um it's a five thousand dollar change order that we're hoping will make our um grant application uh very strong and and competitive. Um, we're uh requesting authorization to increase the mileage rate reimbursement because of the cost of gas, uh, the IRS has increased it. Um, we've got a noise waiver request for uh 415 Sowell Street. Um, they have a a fundraiser. Uh, this is the second year in a row they've been doing it, and uh they have music on the block up until ten, eleven o'clock at night, and the block um has consented to it and we're very happy to be able to uh to support them in their fundraiser. Um, next is uh Assemblyman Chris Burdick has asked us for um our support of Assembly Bill and the Senate Bill amending the environmental conservation law by adding a new section regarding freshwater wetlands pesticide prohibitions, trying to keep our freshwater um wetlands safe. Um, we actually are gonna table the next item, the liability insurance renewal. We haven't gotten a final number on that. It expires the end of August and we're waiting um for um RJ. He's he got the uh newest bid and it was forty-eight pages and he didn't have a chance to analyze it for us for tonight, so he'll be coming on the sixteenth as well. And before I forget, the meeting on the sixteenth is actually a daytime meeting. It's eleven o'clock in the morning. Um, next is consideration of sale of real property. I believe there'll be a full resolution at the Town Board meeting. And the last two are award utility easement agreement um and the Birch Lane Water Agreement. Um, so the Woody uh Utility Easement Agreement um has to do with Byram Lake Road um uh water main replacement. The Mount Cisco uh town of Mount Kisco is currently um undertaking in our town, partially in our town. And the next is the Birch Lane Water Agreement, which is basically a renewal of uh the water agreement between Mount Kisco and Newcastle, where Mount Kisco takes and provides water to uh Birch Drive residents. And that's it. Any questions, all, any others? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, people, if you can.
Thanks. So, you know, questions? Can I have a motion to uh adjourn the work session, open the Town Board meeting?
I move to adjourn the work session and open the Town Board meeting.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I see Tara's joining us. Hi.
Hey, Tara.
Hi.
Uh, all right, everybody, welcome to our Town Board meeting again of August ninth, twenty twenty-two. We're happy to see everybody on this toasty evening. Um, Jill, do we have any announcements?
Just um, it's gonna be in tomorrow's e-newsletter in detail, but uh paving starts uh August fifteenth. Um, so residents of uh, too many to mention. Uh, you you will be notified. It'll it'll be in the e-newsletter of tomorrow, a complete list. We will be sending out code red um messages to all residents uh who are affected by the paving. Um, and uh although everyone loves to have their their street paved, um, it is an inconvenience. So um we're sorry about that and we um we ask for everyone's patience. Um, the paving's gonna take place Monday through Friday from seven AM to five PM. Um, and this is in addition to the several roads that we had crack sealed and micro-surfacing done. Um, and that process actually was started on the fourth and the fifth, and it's gonna be picked up again on the tenth and the eleventh, weather, um, it's weather-dependent. So um just be patient and uh see how the work crews are out there. It wasn't hard.
Hopefully, it gets a little cooler for them.
Yes.
Um, thank you. Uh, also an announcement, it'll also be in the e-newsletter, but just save the dates. I know everyone's thinking summer, um, September sixth.
Sixth, but the...
County Executive has a la- has authorized us to um hold an on-the-horizon airport uh master plan scoping session at the Chapel Court Performing Arts Center. Six PM on the sixth, we are very appreciative that we will have one here in town and certainly not just our residents are entitled to come, but anyone uh in Northern Westchester or anywhere else who's impacted by the airport, who wants to have a say in the master plan process, I urge you to come, attend, make your voices heard. There's only gonna be a few after, I think the one after that's in Greenwich, and there may be one other virtual, and then they'll be done. So it's one of the last times you'll be able to come. Um, I think it is the first day of school, so mark your calendars now. Um, give your kids an early dinner and come on down to Chapak or bring them. They might like the uh legislative process. Um, all right, that's all I have. Everything else, I'm I'm holding my supervisor's report. Um, for our community corner, I wanted to wish a happy upcoming birthday to Alexander Colfin and also to President Bill Clinton, and a happy birthday to Christina Lee Shi. Uh, we also celebrated some birthdays that were uh in the newsletter but not publicly announced. Uh, happy ninth birthday to Olivia Hollick. Happy twelfth birthday to Kelly Morton. Happy birthday and welcome to the teenage years to Savannah Smith. And happy anniversary Dulce and Justin Smith. So again, um, please let us know if you would like an announcement uh made about birthdays, anniversaries, things like that. At a minimum, we will be making sure to announce them at every meeting and they will be in your uh newsletter.
Happy, happy.
Happy, happy. Uh, anything else, Jill, from Town Administrator Report? All right, so we'll move right to public comment, new business. Uh, we do have a public hearing tonight uh about the property maintenance law. If you are speaking about that, now is not the time yet. Please wait until we open that public hearing. Uh, but if there's any public comment or new business, I see you very excited. Come on up.
I'm excited because, thank you to the building department, we have water on Roaring Brook Road.
Yes.
Um, I think a lot of people are not aware of the terrific job they do. They get virtually no public credit and they deserve it. We had a situation, it was it was bad. Um, water main broke um on Roaring Brook Road, uh flooded the area between the the intersection and the uh Horace Greeley High School. Um, these guys came in the middle of the night. They worked, they worked, they worked, they got it done. By eleven PM, um, we were able to have water. And uh lots of lots of credit to the building department. I just wanted to say a public thank you to them and a public thank you to to the town for managing this. And I'd really like to give these guys more credit for the great job that they do all the time. Um, so uh, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
We have excellent town staff, we're very lucky.
We do, we are, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, thanks for allowing me to address the board tonight. My name's John Colissar. I'm an associate attorney at Harris Beach, uh, the office down in White Plains. I'm here on behalf of Greenwood Realty. They are the property owner for one sixty King Street. Um, on Friday, uh, you may be aware, we we had sent your you all a a letter on behalf of our client about a letter from the Town Board and Town Staff, um, basically asserting that under the Town Code, uh, property owners have to fix what our town infrastructure, water mains, on a state highway, and that the town would be doing that if the property owner un- didn't undertake that responsibility. Uh, we respectfully disagree with the interpretation of the Town Code. We think that that interpretation not only is wrong, but also is um violates New York State Town Law, uh specifically Section two oh two A. Um, and we're just really here to come to what is a practical solution to the board. We see it as a sensible uh solution could be really reached here, simply amending the Town Code to clarifying that property to owners don't have to fix town infrastructure and water mains on state highways. It's it's not only impractical, but can be very expensive for a lot of town residents. And so um it, there's a very sensible solution here. We're willing to work with the Town Board on this one, um, and the Town Attorney and the Department of Water to get this job done, uh, whatever means is necessary. You know, it's it's some, uh, we believe our interpretation is not only practical, but also in line with the surrounding towns' interpretations that clearly define the difference between a water main and a service pipe, the service pipe being from a property line, curb box, to a building versus in a public right-of-way. And so um, thank you, and we're willing to work with you guys on that. So appreciate your time tonight and thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. All right, um, any other public comments or new business? Carrie, is there anyone online? Oh, sorry. Okay, uh, we will give it another five seconds. If you have a public comment, uh, please raise your digital hand. All right, then we will be moving to our public hearing. Um, can I have a motion, please, to open a public hearing on the local law to add Chapter ninety-three of the Town of Newcastle uh Town Code concerning property maintenance?
I move to open a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Ed, do you wanna walk us through this before we open it for comment?
Sure, so the uh version of the local law that's in the packet tonight is uh the same as the one that the board has already workshop, with one exception in the first section. Uh, on purpose, we've added some language that um the board requested with respect to zombie properties. And I think that may be important to note, um, because the focus of the the local law is really to address an enforcement issue and to give the building inspector more tools to deal with situations um where the town can't otherwise uh uh get a remedy. Because the property owner, as Tom said, at the work session, is either um unwilling or unable to to deal with the situation. And I know the board received a public comment today from a homeowner who's impacted by one of these properties in his neighborhood, and it's just not something that you wanna live next to. So I say all that just to, for stakeholders who are watching, that the the focus of this uh is really to put greater enforcement tools in the hands of the building inspector. Uh, we were also, Tom and I are also aware of this other issue with pollinator gardens. Um, and we've uh still have that language in the draft local law to deal with that issue. Uh, but that really hasn't and wasn't the focus of the of the local law, at least initially.
Right. Um, and uh, Chris, in a minute, I would like you to address maybe what the Conservation Board uh brought before the Town Board. They'd sent that email. But before we get there, I just wanted to make it clear again to the public that the intent of this law is not, again, to have uh our building inspector, you know, driving around town intent upon mowing your lawn. It's really meant to get at when there's a significant issue that's either impacting health or safety, um, where we can't get that remedy. It allows us to to remedy uh that type of situation and then put that lean on the tax bill, which we were unable to do before. And that can happen mostly with zombie properties where we're not even sure. It's a bank that owns the property, nobody's taking care of it. There may be health, there may be, you know, safety hazards on there, and we don't know who to contact or are not getting uh a response from the people we're able to contact. So that's what this is meant to get at, not to try to, you know, enforce you, you know, on your everyday maintenance of your property. This is really meant to get at something much more significant. Um, and we do wanna encourage pollinator gardens, or if you like, you know, a meadow in your lawn. And and we did receive some uh additional language from our Conservation Board. And um, Chris, you're the liaison to the Conservation Board, so maybe you'd like to speak to that.
Sure, so we didn't actually receive it from the full board, we received it from several members of the board. Um, and there is some discussion at the Conservation Board level, and I think they'll they'll reserve their right to submit additional suggestions. Um, but I think, you know, there is agreement, some of the things we talked about, um, and and we had suggested and discussed in in the prior meeting, you know, whether we use the word cultivated, whether we use the word intentional. Um, you know, and some of the suggestions include, you know, words like managed natural landscape and defining that as um, you know, as having intentionality. I think that's an important thing for us to to think about, uh, to address, because there there was concern, um, you know, that that somehow we're we're expanding the scope of this. And just just to put a, again, fine point on what Ed said, in case anyone still has doubt, New York State law already addresses a lot of the conditions that people are concerned about. And so what we're doing with this law is adding an enforcement mechanism, but then going above and beyond what New York State law says to allow for additional managed landscapes, meadows, pollinator gardens, um, and intentional, you know, uh, you know, uh, uh, activity that we encourage. And so that's, I think, where some of the, you know, push and pull is is how far we go with that. Um, and so I encourage the board um to be open-minded, because there there are some suggestions to go a little further, um, and I think we should be thinking about that. Um, and whether it's in this law, um, which is a property maintenance law, or maybe down the road in a broader law that talks about, um, you know, encouraging a lot of this activity and providing, you know, suggestions to residents on how to do it. So um, we're opening the public hearing and it's not closing. I think we should, you know, continue to think about that. And I'm guessing we will get some additional suggestions from members of the board um in the next week or so.
Thank you.
Um, and something I'd like to say also, which I was trying to express at the the last Town Board meeting, is um that we have um a traditional aesthetic to lawns. And I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have the unintended consequences of sort of codifying what is more traditional at this time, which is grass that's mowed and maintained with pesticides and a lot of water usage. Uh, because I think that the traditional aesthetic is probably unsustainable. And at some point, people will start to move away from that and have, you know, pollinator gardens and um other non-traditional lawns. So I I just um, I'm hopeful that we can come up with language that is not locking us into what a lot of people consider a traditional-looking lawn.
Right. So this is really meant to enforce what is already in the real property, New York State real property law. So it's, that's where it's codified. Um, this is really more of an enforcement provision for um uh for violations of that law, if it becomes necessary. But I agree with you that I think that law potentially is is outdated, and at least with respect to manicured lawns. And perhaps it's something that we should even let uh our Assemblymen and State Senator know that this is something that should be looked at at the state level.
Yeah, I think that that's a good, good idea.
But just just for, you know, for 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 future discussion, New York State law allows us to go above and beyond.
Right.
Um, and I think we should be thinking in those terms, and I think this law is a good start.
Great.
So just just so everyone understands, this is not, you know, taking us backwards, it's taking us forward. So the question is how far we go, and I think we should continue to discuss that, discuss that.
Great, agreed. All right, um, anything else from any other Town Board member? Okay, so why don't we open this up then to public comment? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to that in person? Looking at you, John. All right, uh, then let's open it up to public comment um online. Is there anyone uh who has a comment? If you do, please, please raise your digital hand. Is is Victoria connected?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Victoria.
Hi, greetings, everyone.
Hello.
Um, so thank you for this uh, these updates, and thanks for, it sounds like the public hearing is extended um until September, is that accurate?
We, yes, we are not gonna close the public hearing today. We're gonna o- have it remain open until our first meeting, I believe, in September.
Okay, okay, that's good to know, thank you for that. And um, thank you for the other, you know, updates about around the language. And thank you for those comments that you just made, Vicky. Um, I guess, you know, one of my thoughts around this is, I think, in the, totally in line with the spirit of your comments, Lisa, uh, you know, what Chris was talking about earlier, everything that's been said thus far around the um, the intention of this legislation to provide the enforcement mechanism for, you know, zombie abandoned properties. And I guess, um, you know, as I think about this, that's such a legitimate goal and such an important goal and such an important reason to create legislation that builds on the New York State existing law. Um, my concern is going above and beyond that. Um, and so I I feel strongly that um confusion would be reduced uh and it, things would be much more clear if the title of the legislation and the purpose clause, that very first clause of the legislation draft, um, that, you know, talks about the purpose of the law specifically stated, uh, you know, whether it's abandoned or zombie, you know, whatever, um, the verbiage that feels, you know, most inclusive was articulated directly there, um, which would mean that the legislation would specifically focus on those properties that the town has concerns about, where they can't, you know, reach the owner, um, the landlord, you know, where there's an unresponsiveness and there may need to be that enforcement mechanism uh to pay for, you know, dealing with that property, which is such an important interest of of the town and of the neighbors affected by that property. My concern is when things go beyond that. So I feel strongly about trying to find a way to just take out um the reference to to other homeowners. You know, I know there's been discussion about, um, you know, other language and pollinator gardens, and um I think that's important, and I'm so glad that the board is sensitive to, um, you know, being open to pollinator gardens and meadows and prairies and um native plants and all of that. I think it's wonderful. I I just think that when we have a law like this that brings to everyone's attention in the community a focus on property maintenance, maintenance, it's almost like a a psychological conscious or unconscious focus, that where people didn't necessarily focus on this before, it brings to everyone's attention a co- you know, a feeling that they have to now think about this, um, that they may want to pay more attention to their yards, because there, you know, there are financial penalties, um, you know, pretty, um, you know, you know, significant uh financial penalties here. And so if people start thinking that way, then they may start erring on the side of having, you know, a quote-unquote neater, more maintained um yard and grounds. And um, that can really be counterproductive to our towns and our communities' intention of supporting the ecosystem. Uh, you know, we have our wonderful B-City uh objectives now and the Monarch Pledge and really wanting to be a more ecologically friendly, um, you know, pollinator, bird, you know, wildlife nature-supporting um environment here. And I think this may unintentionally cause people to use practices uh that take away habitat. You know, I was thinking about certain streets that I walk my dog on that are, you know, totally not maintained, that are full of beautiful beneficial native shrubs and and grasses that the property owners probably never think twice about. They don't look at it as, you know, an intentional pollinator garden. They may not even realize the benefits ecologically that that part of their property um provides. But a law like this may may cause them, you know, if they're a responsible property owner, to think about, hmm, do I need to make my... hmm, do I need to make modifications? Do I need to make things tighter? And which, as I said earlier, may cause them to take action, to cut things back that would really be damaging to the ecosystem. So it's those unintended consequences and that psychological focus on property maintenance that I think actually at this juncture point especially may be counterintuitive to where we're headed as a community, being more thoughtful about supporting the ecosystem and pollinators. And so my suggestion is to think about, you know, changing or, you know, adding a few words to section one, the property maintenance, you know, code title and ninety-three dash one, the purpose to specifically note that this is, you know, around property maintenance regarding abandoned or zombie properties. Thank you.
So Ed, do you wanna talk tonight, or do you want me to?
Well, there is new language in the purpose section that actually calls calls out zombie properties and otherwise neglected properties. So there was an effort to try to focus this on the original intent, which is dealing with these situations where there's no question that 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 someone has given up, as Tom said at the last meeting, it it it's out of control. And he needs, he needs the ability to actually not just get a piece of paper that says, go fix it, but actually get it fixed.
Right, so here's a question. I I totally see that. I have the the document in front of me, so I appreciate that that language is in there. I guess it's that otherwise neglected properties. So that's the kind of definitional subjective, and I'm just wondering what your thoughts are around that.
Well, I think, I mean, I think, I mean, Victoria, I think, again, we're we're imagining a scenario where we're we're addressing a remedy to a law that exists already that has vexed the town building inspector and led to conditions in town that just can't be fixed. We're addressing that remedy. And then, I think, and we're willing to certainly consider additional language to go even further to clarify the intent and to specify conditions that we are most definitely not trying to address that New York State law currently would allow us to address. So so I'm with you. I I think we could potentially change the law to neglected property law. I mean, just a suggestion. But a neglected property is a property that isn't intentionally maintained for a managed natural landscape or some other condition that we all agree is beneficial. So I I I hear your sort of, I think, fairly theoretical concern. I mean, I think we've addressed it. I think, again, we can be creative in terms of other language. And some of the suggestions that, you know, came in from several members of the conservation board, I think, do help us get there. But at least I, for one, don't think we can say only zombie properties.
We can't.
Because it's not, it's not just zombie properties.
So I wonder if there's a way to say, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, and Victoria, if you think about it, get getting away from, let's say, lawn maintenance, if you think about other areas where this may arise. So let's say there's somebody who has broken down, you know, fifty broken down cars in their front yard with significant broken glass and, you know, rusted metal and things like that. They're in violation of that code. And it's not, let's say, a zombie property, but we are unable to get them to clean that up. And it's a significant safety issue. That's where we would have the ability or, you know, Tom would, to go in and and make sure that that gets cleaned up. So it's not just zombie properties, though that that's where, you know, a majority of the issues we're seeing are arising and where we would expect them to arise.
I hear you.
So perhaps, and thank you for that, Lisa and others. So perhaps defining very clearly what neglected, what constitutes neglect, maybe that would help narrow it, you know, just ensure that there's no overreach and that it really is getting to those truly extreme situations that the town needs to to utilize this for, if that makes sense.
Okay, yep, thank you. So we'll we'll definitely take another look at it and you'll, we'll have another opportunity to to comment on it, at least one at our at our next hearing.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Victoria.
Okay, thanks, Victoria. Any other comments? Is there anyone else with their digital hand raised? Okay, did, I don't know if people heard that. If you're having trouble raising your digital hand, if you can indicate in the chat box that you'd like to speak. We know there are a few technical difficulties. Okay, all right, well, then I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing and and reopen it on, what is the date?
September seventh.
September seventh, which, by the way, is Wednesday, because Tuesday night is gonna be the on the horizon. So it will be on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday night, September seventh. So can I have a motion?
Okay, I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect.
We we had one more person who had missed the public.
Oh, yes. There was someone, Nicole Rocher, I believe, was trying to speak during public comment, new business, and we were having some technical difficulties. So if we can bring her back, if she's still there and would like to speak. Oh, there she is. Hi, Nicole. Nicole, can you get a little closer to your microphone? I don't know, can can we raise her volume a little bit? All right, Nicole. Can we hear you? Try speaking now. All right, we'll listen really hard. Yes, they just got approved.
She asked to be there.
I I I didn't really catch all that.
So Nicole, they they were approved for the film permit or or the the board is considering approving them for the film permit. You were one of the people who signed the consent that you were okay with the additional hour.
Did you hear that, Nicole?
Yeah, I heard it. You can't hear me at all?
No, we couldn't hear you.
Okay, so so I just wanted to make sure that the permit was granted, because they're supposed to start doing it on Monday.
We're gonna vote on that this evening.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Okay, I I'm pretty sure it's gonna lean in your favor.
It's looking good, Nicole.
It's looking good. All right, stay tuned. It's gonna be an exciting night.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicole. All right. Okay, so I think, having nothing else, let's move to our consent agenda items, unless there's anything else we need to discuss.
Yep, we're gonna, we're striking, we're striking a conservation.
But we have to ask to do that, don't we?
No, no, we can do that. But is there anything else that anyone wants to take out and resolve separately under the consent agenda items? And we're just gonna delete the.
And the liability insurance as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, so we are not going to look at the conservation board and the liability insurance right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Chris, do you have these in front of you?
Uh, I don't.
You do.
No, I do. Okay. Sorry.
And I think you have to read them all. I think you can just say the consent agenda items.
So can I just say, as it are?
Yes.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as submitted, consisting of the items listed herein.
With the with the two deletions that we just discussed.
With two deletions that we just discussed.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorization to change status of Assistant Assessment Clerk amending provisional to permanent. I move to authorize the change in status of Carolina Patricchino in the position of Assistant Assessment Clerk within the Assessor's Department from the provisional to a permanent basis at the annual salary of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, two dollars and three cents, Group Three, Step Three, with a minimum probation probationary period of twelve weeks effective August eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move, authorization to accept retirement Senior Account Clerk Comptroller. I move to accept the retirement of Patricia Hockren Barnett from the position of Senior Account Clerk within the Comptroller's Office effective August twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. The town would like to thank Trish for her eighteen years of dedicated service.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you.
And authorization to hire Senior Account Clerk Comptroller. I move to authorize the hiring of Katerina Hanativ for the position of Senior Account Clerk within the Comptroller's Office at the annual salary of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twelve cents, effective August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vicky.
Carrie, you're on mute, by the way.
Sorry, that happens automatically.
Vicky, you wanna go to the next one?
Sure. Okay. I move to award the bid for after-school bus services to Chappaqua Transportation at the cost of twelve dollars per child effective for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to.
I think we're gonna, I think we're done.
We have, we have, um.
We've got the real property one.
The last one.
Do you really have a copy? Yeah.
I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the town board of the Town of Newcastle owns the property located at forty-eight Hades Cross Road, designated as further detailed in the resolution. Whereas the property was acquired pursuant to the INRAM foreclosure process, was not used for public purpose and is surplus town property. And whereas Red Apple Building Renovations LLC desires to purchase the property and the town board desires to sell the property to Red Apple on the terms and conditions set forth in the contract of sale, now therefore be it resolved, the town board hereby declares the property as surplus town property. Be it further resolved that the town board, in accordance with Article Eight of the State Environmental Conservation Law and Six New York C R R, Part Six One Seven, and upon upon review of the AAF and all other materials prepared for this unlisted action, hereby adopts the attached negative declaration. And be it further resolved, the town is authorized to sell the property to Red Apple on the terms and conditions set forth in the contract. Be it further resolved that Lisa Katz, supervisor, or Jill Simon Shapiro, the town administrator, are authorized to execute the contract of sale in form and substance to the satisfaction of the town attorney and closing closing instruments necessary to effectuate the transfer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, anything else, Jill? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.